From the universities of Politeknik Right now, there are about 2,200 applicants that already registered and verified in the system that we have built for the services to give the information of the job market. And also, we have a bazaar and a Polybatam fair. Polybatam fair means the competitions across the high school, students that are organized by our student union and also the Student Activity Center. And also, we have a robotics competition to the students' high school level also, cooperate with the Singapore Technology and Design, Singapore University Technology and Design. And they have attended 25 participants from across the high school students' level. So, we try to merge all the activities because we want to... ...all of community can involve with what Polybatam do. So, we have a Polybatam, also Polybatam Industry Festival. So, we give industry also opportunity to share the updated technology to the students and also the stakeholders. And we also give them appreciation, the partner of Polybatam that already very contributed to the our process learning and also research in the past one years. So, we want to make a gathering together, the industry, the students, the lecturers, industry start from the big and also from the small medium enterprise also, and the other partners from related stakeholders like governments and also the like training center and so on. So, we hope we can collaborate, we can become a powerful movement to encourage the economic growth in Batam, especially Raya Island, commonly in Indonesia of course. Maybe that my report and thank you very much for your coming again, Pak Minister, and to all our participants, thank you very much. And the last, maybe I also have to thanks to the sponsor. At least maybe more than 30 companies that support in cash or in kind of this event also. Thank you very much, everyone enjoy this day. Thank you. Good morning. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you, Mr. Bambang for your inspiring speech.
Ladies and gentlemen, now is my distinct pleasure to invite our next speaker, Minister of Higher Education, Science, and Technology of Indonesia. With great respect, we now welcome Professor Brian Yuliarto, PhD, to deliver his speech. From Professor Brian, this stage is yours.
Thank you. Good morning. Distinguished guests. Ladies and gentlemen, my honor to acknowledge first Director of Politeknik Negeri Batam, my friend from Bandung, yeah, 25 years ago, Pak Bambang Hendrawan. And then also member, head of KPPN Batam, Mr. Ahmad Wiyoso. Thank you. And then also coming here, member of the Supervisory Board of Polybatam BLU, Mr. Wahyu Gali Saputro. Then, of course, Professor Matt Hansen from UID. We talked much last night. Thank you, Matt. And then Regional Co-Leader, CDIO Region, Professor Sin Moh Cha. Thank you. And then Dr. Helena Leong, Co-Leader of CDIO Asian Region. Also here, Dr. Diki Wijaya, Head of the Provincial Power and Trust Migration Office, Raya Island. And then also Deputy Chairman for Investment and Business Development to BP Batam, Mr. Vari Jimmy Francis. Thank you, Pak Vari. And then Mr. Fadli Hamsani, GM Enterprise Solution Management of Telkomsel. Thank you. Then Mr. Lim Jogi, Director of the School of Electrical and Electronic Engineering, Singapore Politeknik. Thank you. And then Mr. Peng Haigang, Research Associate Professor, Singkowasen Zen International Graduate School. Coming here. Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Joseph Pepito, President of Cebu Technological University. And then also here, Pak Professor Agung Damarsakti, Director of UMR. I met last night. He hasn't come yet. Okay. And then Dr. Tipri Rose Kartika, Director of Politeknik Negeri Media Kreatif, Pak Ocha. And then Director of Politeknik Negeri Padang, Mr. Sur Fayondri. Pak Fayondri, thank you. And then Miss Amelia Ayudewi Keruniawati, Director of Politeknik Bintan Chakrawala. And also Bu Ita, Dr. Ita Mariza, Director of Politeknik Negeri Gajatunggal and President of Student Executive Board of Politeknik Negeri Batam. Thank you very much. Of course, all distinguished delegates, industrial partner and participant, I cannot express one by one. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Salam sejahtera, Om swastiastu, nama budaya, salam kebajikan, rahayu. Distinguished leaders of Politeknik Negeri Batam, respected faculty members, students, and also honor guests, my privilege to stand before you today at Politeknik Negeri Batam and institution that plays a pivotal role in advancing vocational educations, research, and innovation for Indonesia's future. As we know that our president, Prabowo Subianto, has made clear aspiration for Golden Indonesia 2045, the centennial vision of our nations anchored around rapid sustainable economic growth, improve social welfare, and technological independence. We aiming to be the sixth largest economy in the world. Under his administration, Indonesia aims to maintain economic growth at 8%. This number of courses is very ambitious, but we believe the country that wanna go to the high-income country needs ambition. We have to be ambitious nation to reach and to leapfrog from this state condition to be the high-income country. That's why we ask, we request all of you, especially from the university, especially here in Politeknik Negeri Batam, let's do something. You have very advantages here. The location is very near to the many industry. But we know that the big impact economy come from the industry which has basic of science and technology. The industry which do not have fundamentals, not based on science and technology, they will not have big impact. That's why our homework now here in Indonesia is how we can prepare, we can design the industry growth in our environment, in our country with the strong basis of science and technology. It's the previous time, our extractive industry, it's previous time, our manufacture industry. It's enough. Of course, that's the condition, existent condition. But from now, we have to move on to the industry which have strong research, strong innovation, and strong science and technology foundations. Because we cannot reach, of course, 8% economic growth. 8% is a big numbers. A big numbers. But we believe Indonesia have reached more than 8% during our history about five times in the previous time. On that time, we have advantages with the oil boom, about 70s or 60s. And on that time, we already prepare our foundation of industry with the strong science and technology. If you still remember, 1990s, about 1996, 1997, we have economic growth at 8.2%. On that time, we prepare very well our industry with the strong base of science and technology. You still remember, we have Indonesian first flight, our airplane. And on that time, we believe this will be our strong foundation for rich, strong industry on science and technology. But you know, everything is not easy. There is nothing big to things with the simple work. And happened to us, 1998, we have strong, you know, strong wind to hit us and then we have economic issue. And at that time, we have to go down significantly. And from about 2000, then we have to fight back again until now. This time, we just only have economic growth at 5%. Means that 5% come from the, you know, business as usual things. So, what we need is how university can be the center of economic growth, how the innovations, research, strong science and technology from the university can influence the industry around so that the industry can wake up and they can start the strong industry using science and technology. So, I request to my friends from the university, let's come to the industry. You don't need to just stay at your campus. Have to go industry, you visit industry, you talk to the CEO of industry, and then convince them, we have to go together. Please put your research in our university. Because some industry even they are not so welcome with the research. Some industry even do not have any R&amp;D divisions, especially in Indonesia. So, let's influence them. We have to go together. We have to move together. And what you need, what industry needs? Let's do it, research. Let's make the innovation for industry in our university. Because university is the location where so many high skill, so many prominent professors, they understand knowledge, they understand the trend of knowledge of technology, but they need to implement the knowledge, the technology in industry. So, I think the industry and university is the two things that cannot be spirited. And this is, I think, one of the problem in Indonesia now. University go alone, the industry go alone, they spirited ways, they go with the different ways. So, I think this CDIO is very perfect words. We have to convince, design, implement, and operate. All of these things have to be done in industry. We cannot, university cannot do lonely in their campuses. It's not enough. Because when you do CDIO in university, in your campus, in your laboratory, sometimes it's not the real needed of the industry. So, let me thank to all of you who launched CDIO. I don't know from when, Matt, when you launch it, five years ago? 2000, 25 years ago? Oh, great. Fortunately, I'm late to know this one. So, thank you to the Matt and of course, all of you who always consistent to, you know, make implementation to prepare this CDIO, to, yes, to implementation the CDIO in industry. Of course, this is very appropriate things, we need it. And the Batam is very appropriate, very exact place because here we have so many industry and here we have some universities. And we hope this word, CDIO words, can be spread out through Indonesia, not only here in Batam. Because some university in Jakarta, in Padang also come here. So, please make CDIO also in your each places, in your original place. The leaders, the top management of university, you have to come to the industry. You have to visit to the CDIO, you have to discuss, you have to talk. And yeah, it's not enough, you just be a leader of university, just stay in university. So, thank you very much. I hope this program can contribute substantially to the national research roadmap. And I hope this scale up can be scaled up and spread out through the other industries. And we really hope industry, they can start to do the more innovative industry. Please, of course, university cannot go alone, we cannot build our industry by ourselves. We need industry sector to build our innovation, to continue our innovation, to scale up the innovation and research from the university to be the real industry. So, ladies and gentlemen, together under Pak President Prabowo vision of Golden Indonesia 2045 with tangible unemployment reduction and through increased research investment via our ministry, we are equipped to build a future of share progress. May our gathering be productive, inspiring, and instrumental in elevating of our nation. Thank you. Thank you very much for your all contribution to this successful events. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Mr. Brian, we kindly ask you to stay in your location. We will now proceed to the next agenda. It's a souvenir presentation from Politeknik Negeri Batam to the Minister of Higher Education, Science, and Technology of Indonesia, Mr. Professor Brian Yuliarto, PhD. May we kindly invite Mr. Bambang Hendrawan to the stage to present the souvenir. The souvenir is a tanjak, a traditional Malay headgear made from folded cloth. It is typically worn by men, historically worn by nobles and warrior. Today, the tanjak stand as a proud symbol of Malay identity and tradition of ten sit at cultural ceremony and celebration.
Baik, dan saat ini kita menyaksikan bersama pemberian tanjak dan juga souvenir dari Politeknik Negeri Batam kepada Profesor Brian Yuliarto. Beri tepuk tangan yang luar biasa. Baik, sekarang kita juga menyaksikan bersama pemberian souvenir dari Politeknik Negeri Batam. Beri tepuk tangan yang luar biasa.
Okay, bye.
That concludes our session for today. We would like to sincerely thank you for your attention and participation. The next session will be continued by Gabriel and Adalisa. I'm Nabila and my partner?
I'm Grayson.
Biding you farewell.
Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Baik, sekarang kita akan melakukan sesi dokumentasi bersama. Kami mengundang tim dokumentasi untuk mengambil posisi terbaik di depan. Baik, kami mengundang pula seluruh partisipan untuk dapat berdiri di tempat. Baik, kami mengundang untuk boleh merapat ke tengah.
We kindly invite our honor guest to come forward to the center for the group, for the session.
Okay, and now let's capture this special moment together in
Three, two, one.
Okay, in... Oke, boleh berikan gaya terbaru, tangan kanan menuju ke atas, baik dalam itungan.
Three, two, one.
Please give applause for all of us. Hi, all participants. Please stay with us so we can start our upcoming session.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to the third day of the CDIO 2025 Asian Regional Meeting. I am Gabriel.
And I am Adelisa Chantika, will continue to be a master of ceremony. Now transition to our first keynote sessions of the day. We are privileged to have with us Mr. Ahmad Hamim Tohari as our moderator today.
Please welcome Mr. Ahmad Hamim Tohari.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. It's a delightful morning after we are hearing the speech from our Minister of Higher Education, Science and Technology. So I will continue this morning session as a schedule. First, I will introduce myself. My name is Ahmad Hamim Tohari. My name, you can call me Hamim. I am from Informatic Engineering Department of Politeknik Negeri Batam. So, in this morning session, first session, we having Mr. Lim Jogi. It's an honor to introduce our listening speaker. First, Dr. Jogi Lim is Director of School of Electrical Engineering at Singapore Polytechnic. Dr. Lim has really through professional engineering education. He has been at the forefront of integrating CDO framework into the curriculum at Singapore Polytechnic. Focusing on developing practical skill that are essential for the engineering world today. And also, his work extend beyond the classroom as he actively engage with industry to ensure the graduate are well prepared to workforce. He also a strong advocate of lifelong learning and supports such as IoT, robotic, I data analytic, 5G, and also he has a really strong commitment in the engineering community and is evident through his role as an honorary treasurer of Automation SG and a member of SOCP Committee for Training and Curriculum at Singapore Advanced Manufacturing Training Academy. Today, Dr. Lim will be sharing his insight on a topic fostering solution-minded engineers, developing CDO competency through community. Please join me in this stage, Dr. Lim Jogi. Give around applause. Oke, please, Dr. Lim, this stage is yours.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. I think it's after the official minister leave, so it becomes more casual and don't have to be so stressed out for all of us. So today I'm going to give my sharing. The title has been changed since the first title that we sent over to the organizer because I thought more appropriate to share something that has a more bigger picture. And first of all, I want to thank Poli Batam for inviting me to give this keynote speech. And I hope that whatever that I'm sharing today will be of interest and of value to everyone of you here. And Poli Batam has become a very good partners and very good friend with Singapore Polytechnic. I think because of our close proximity, it's just an hour or ferry ride to Batam. And over the past few years, I must say that thanks to many of the Poli Batam colleagues to have helped us to make this collaboration much closer. And many of the colleagues have become very good friends with us. So like Director, Pak Bambang, Pak Hendawan, and many of the Poli Batam colleagues. So, thank you so much. And today really I want to take the time to just share a bit about this topic on fostering solution-minded engineers through the CDO competencies, developing CDO competencies through community engaged learning. So that's really what I want to talk about. And first of all, just to give a brief introduction to Singapore Polytechnic in case some of you are still not familiar with us. Okay, so Singapore is not a very big place. SP, we are right at the nearer to the southern, western part of Singapore. And we are the first polytechnic to be established in Singapore even before Singapore gained independence. And over the past 70-plus years, we have been producing graduates that is aligned to the industry. So I think that's what just now Minister Brian was talking about. About the importance of in the academic, how close we are to the industry. And so as in SP, we have always been, one of the key thing is when we produce our graduates, it must be graduates that are ready for the industry itself. So we call ourselves a poly for all ages because we are looking at producing graduates that is relevant in all ages, but also graduates that are at every age. Okay, so we are not just helping those young, the young ones, but more and more we begin to see that the industry also need us to come in to help to train those who are already in the industry working for a number of years. So I'll talk a bit more about that as well, why that is important. So, SP, we have more than 1,400 staff. Okay, I won't go into the details of everything here, but just to highlight, we cover many, many different disciplines in Singapore Polytechnic as well as we have 30 full-time diploma programs, which is let me see whether the pointer can work. Okay, no, okay, so we have 30 full-time diploma programs covering many, many different areas from engineering to maritime, to business, media arts design, and chemical, life science, computing, so many different disciplines. And we see our graduates go into different areas and different sectors in the industry itself. And as I mentioned, we want to be a poly, a polytechnic of all ages. And when, one of the mission in our Polytechnic, the key mission is we want to prepare our students to be life-ready, to be work-ready, and also more and more now to be world-ready. So that we really see that the world is their oyster and through all, we have to prepare them. And that gives us that mandate. Okay, we have a vision that we want to be inspired learner, served with mastery and caring community. Okay, so that's what we are all about. And to that end, in SP, we have a education model. So again, this is like an institution that we hope to build in our SP institution. So you can see here that there are many things, I'm not going to spend a lot of time to unpack it, but I thought I just want to talk about these three areas, PET, CET, and IE. Okay, so pre-employment training, continuing education and training, and industrial engagement. So that's really the thing that underpin SP because we believe these three are very important. Okay, when we say the pre-employment training, these are students who come to us before they go into the industry, before they are build their career. So we really want to see how can we put in them the necessary skill sets, there's necessary both the technical as well as the soft skills in order to prepare them that they are able to build good careers immediately after they graduate, as well as build long-term career resilience. But beyond that, as I mentioned just now, we are also looking at how do we prepare or help the those who are already working in the industry for a number of years. Okay, we know that the world is changing rapidly. And more and more in the Polytechnics, SP, we have a mandate to help to train the workforce that are currently already working there. Okay, with all the new technologies that are out there. So continuing education and training is important as well. And in order to do that, we really need to know what is happening out there in the workforce and keep in line with all these trends. And finally, the industrial engagement is important. Okay, that's where we understand what is happening out there. That's where we also look at what the companies are looking for when they are needing help in terms of maybe some technologies and doing projects. And when our staff and our students go in to help to do some of the projects, the students also gain good understanding, good skills and knowledge of what is needed in the industry. So we see these three as all very closely related and all play a part to help to us to prepare our graduates. And so why am I, so now I've explained and talked about SP, what SP is about. Let me go into the my sharing and my presentation. I want to start off by sharing with us what I see as some of the current trends, okay, that is happening in the world of work. And I think many of you will identify with that. And these are the few that I've, I could offhand think of. And I think the first thing that is the trend that is happening is definitely artificial intelligence. How artificial intelligence have really come into the workplace? Okay, I'm just going to pull out some facts. Okay, I cannot remember all the numbers, but I thought the numbers really help us to understand. So in terms of AI, alright, recently there was a report from McKinsey. And really they talk about, we all know that now with all the Gen AI, all the large language model from companies like OpenAI, even the traditional strong technology companies like Meta and Google. So with all these large language model that is coming in, we are really entering into a new information technology age. And so this report says that AI, they are projected to add 4.4 trillion dollars in terms of productivity. Okay, so that's no small number. And but yet, while many companies say that they want to, they are planning for more AI investment. Okay, in fact, the report says that 92% of companies actually do have plans to increase their AI investment. But yet, we, they, in the same report, it also says that only 1% of these companies are considered themselves to be mature in adopting AI. So AI is definitely going to transform, but there's also opportunity and there's also the risk if we do not prepare our students in this world of AI. Okay, the next one would be skill-based economy. I think this is also something that caught my attention recently when I start to see reports of, you know, in the universities, some of the graduates are finding it very difficult to land jobs, even in Singapore. But I see it also happening like in places like China, in places like even the US. And the reason is that nowadays, many companies are not just looking for qualifications. What they are looking for are also experienced skills. So again, from one of the report, it says 81% of the companies they are surveyed, they are actually looking at skill-based hiring right now. And this is in 2024, and I'm sure now it could be higher. Back in 2022, there were only 57% are looking at skill-based approaches. So these are also a trend where companies are looking at beyond the paper qualification from the graduates that come out from the universities or from the graduates. They are also looking at what kind of skills do you already possess. Okay, and these may not just be technical skills, but some of the soft skills as well. So that's in terms of the skill base. The next one is lifelong learning. Okay, so lifelong learning, we also know that it is increasingly more important. Again, from one of an article that I read, and it's a study from IBM, that in the past, so I, also in this study, they look at what is the half-life of skills. Alright, skills half-life, some of us who are engineers, scientists, you know what is a half-life, right? That something that lose its value, the time it takes for some quantity, some, something that to lose its value by half, okay? So that's the half-life. And in this study, they, they showed that, okay, or they, they, they mentioned that in the past, the half-life of skills were maybe 10, 15 years. Okay, so those were the times traditionally. But currently, in, in, in the current state of things, actually the half-life of skills now people are looking at five years. Okay, every skill that you have a five years. And if we look at skills that require even more deep technology, AI, we are looking at even shorter than that, could be two to three years, half-life. Okay, so that's a very sobering fact. And it also cause to us to think that it is important not just to prepare our graduates, okay, for now and the skills for now, but how do we prepare them to continue to learn, to be the lifelong learner so that they can have the skills that will take them throughout and these skills will keep updating. So the lifelong learning is again another part of this changing world of work. The other one, I would say, is remote collaboration. So this again is something that we are can all identify with. Many of us now may not spend all our time physically at our workplace because of technology like Zoom, Microsoft Teams, we are able to have, make remote work a reality. And of course, we all know about COVID. Okay, COVID really accelerated that process. Okay, because now we, when we now realize that work from home is a possibility, may not be every day, but there's a possibility that there is this remote work. And I think when this remote work comes in, it also allows for remote collaboration. So again, we see many of our graduates or the current workforce now working across national boundaries. They have teams from different parts of the world. And with Zoom, with Microsoft Teams, many of these work now take place, a project could involve people from different parts of the world. So that's a part about, about remote, not just about remote work, but about remote collaboration. And finally, the last trend that is happening in the world of our work now is multi-disciplinary work. Correct? We know, all know that again, the world has become more and more complex. Many of the problems now, we call them wicked problems, correct? Problems that, challenges that really cannot be solved by just and one group of engineers with a particular skill set. But all these challenges, be it climate change, the sustainability, or the disruptive technologies that is coming in, this requires skills from different groups of people and that's where the multi-disciplinary aspects really have to come in. So I thought these are some of these key trends in terms of the work. And the question then is, the world, the work, working world now is of this nature. As we are preparing our students, the question we have to ask ourselves is how best to prepare our student for this new world of work? And of course, CDIO is one of the, is one of the ways. Yeah, we are all in this CDIO conference, yeah, with our partners. We are, we are looking at how CDIO as a framework can help us to structure our courses, to structure our programs so that we can better prepare our students. I think this is really what we are all looking for. And the whole idea is really what we, how do we rethink how engineer education can be done? The way that we teach and how we teach it, and as I mentioned, that's how we look at CDIO as one of the key thing. But the key, the main thing we really, really to ask ourselves is the engineers that we need. Okay, and I find these are the few characteristics of the engineer that are needed now in this new workforce. Ben, and of course, from myself, when I look at, I come from engineering school. so I took at engineers, but some of you could be from another discipline. You could also be thinking about what is the kind of scientist, what is the kind of designer, what's the kind of administrator or whichever discipline? What is the kind of qualities that are needed? And I thought these are things that are quite common throughout different disciplines. So first of all, for engineers, I think that we need to still continue to be technically competent. Okay, we need to continue to have that fundamentals, engineering fundamentals that we need to build in them. Okay, so this is what we always seek to do, build that foundation. Okay, but building that foundation is is just one step. I think the other the other quality that is needed is we have to be contextually aware. Okay, what I mean by contextually aware is that they have to be understanding what is the situation, what is happening as they apply the engineering principles. So the understanding of the social and global implications of how they are building their solutions, developing their solutions in context with the situation, I think that's another key aspects when we look at this new world of work. The other the other part, the next one would be then having that empathy and the ethical mindset as well, correct? We do not want to just build engineers, okay, that do not have that feeling, the values that is very important. And in that, we we look at, I I also recently learned this term, okay, in the past year. It's not just about human centered, okay, but it's about humanity centered. Okay, when we say, what do we mean by humanity centered? We are looking at understanding the impact, okay, to the world as a whole, to humanity. And so there is this term about humanity centered approach, when we are looking at building the kind of engineers that will go out to make an impact in the world. And finally, the other, the next, the last quality I would, I would say, I would I would think would be to be adaptable and collaborative. So again, we talk about now we have diverse teams, team with different skill sets, teams that could even cross boundary, coming from different countries. So it's important to be able to be adaptable. It's important to be collaborative in building solutions through these teams. And I think so, this is something that it is important. But the question is, then how do we build this into our students to produce this type of engineers? So that's where we, in Singapore Polytechnic, we came up with this concept, okay, through CDIO, how do we build solution minded students to who eventually can be solution minded engineers? And what are the thing about these solution minded engineers? First of all, they understand before solving, okay? So many of us have seen people who, before even understanding the situation, straight away offer a hundred solutions to the problem, correct? So it's important for us, I think, to before even we try to come out with a solution, to really understand what is the situation, understand in context. So there's one first part about a solution minded interns. The next part is then, after understanding what is the problem, the next question is, then we have to frame the problems with empathy as well as with rigor, okay? In terms of knowing what is available, knowing how to make use of the situation as well as the resources that are available with empathy and rigor to solve, frame the problem. And then finally, once you have the understanding of the problem and being able to frame this problem, finally is to co create the solution with stakeholders and not just by yourself. Okay, so these are the three key things that I thought would be something that when we talk about solution minded engineers. Of course, there could be other aspects and I'll be happy to discuss and understand from inputs as well as to learn from many of you all here in terms of how do we mean by building solution minded interns. Okay, but let me just give some examples, okay? So here I have two examples. When we talk about solution minded, what does it mean? That goes beyond or but or rather to to think creatively, to come out with solutions in the face of problems. So the first example that I would like to give is, I don't know how many of you are in the semiconductor microelectronics field. Are there anyone in this field? Oh, yeah, maths. Okay, so if you are in the semiconductor field, you you would have heard of this term called chip binning. This is something that some of us may find it quite interesting. But if you think about it, actually, it makes sense. So in in a wafer fab fabrication process, it's about build making the microchips through the wafers. And we all know that it's a very highly precision, very highly precise operation and and many technologies have been in put inside there. And but we also know that in all, when you build the wafer, not all the chips within that wafer will be working hundred percent, okay? And it's a matter of fact, okay, there will always be, we talk about yield, there will always be some parts of the wafer, okay, that are not up to the standard, either because of the memory, some of the memories or some of the different parts of the 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 chip may not be working up to the 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 standard that is required. So in the semiconductor industry, okay, there is this part about chip binning, which is when they instead of throwing away those chips that have been fabricated, that are not up to the standard of a particular performance, okay? They offer these chips and offer these chips at a lower performance grade. So this is happening in in the likes of companies like Intel, in the likes of companies like even Nvidia, okay, where you will see different model, like for example, Intel, we have I seven, I five, I nine, and each of the I so called chips, you also have maybe different performance grade with different cores. So the it's the same, we not now we talk about GPUs in by Nvidia. They will produce different GPUs with different slightly slightly different performance. And for some of these chips, they are actually coming from the same wafer. Okay, so you can see how the engineers rethink the problem, look at what is the problem and come up with a solution, okay, that is able to reduce wastage, okay, because some of the chips are actually still functioning, but you just need to tune the performance down. Okay, so that's in a very layman, a very simple terms of how a chip building, chip binning works. Now let me go to the other example, okay, from the small miniature chip to now to the big. Okay, with the to the big rockets, okay? So we all know about Tesla, no, not Tesla, Elon Musk, okay, the SpaceX. So in the past, when rockets were launched, okay, we know that the booster rockets will fall down to the earth, okay? That's part and parcel of how rocket mission is is about space mission. And for the longest time, it has always been an accepted fact that you will, these booster rockets will fall down into the ocean and the the and it's it's just right there in the ocean, alright? But when the SpaceX team and maybe not just them, but many of the engineers, okay, who are thinking about space mission, okay, they started to think about how to make reusable rockets. Okay, so SpaceX, okay, the Falcon nine was one of the first successful rockets that were able to have their booster rockets after sending the payload up into space to be able to have a vertical landing back into the launch pad. Okay, so again, this is a way that the engineers were able to rethink the problem and help to save in terms of the resources, help to reduce the cost as well. And and I was told that for every of these rockets that come back to earth, is a savings of about fifty million dollars. So you can see here, all these shows, what does it mean when you look at a solution mindedness? Okay, so I'm though I don't have a lot of time, but let me just quickly go through the rest of the other things I wanted to say. So I just want to share in in SP, Singapore Poly, okay, how do we build these solution minded competencies within our students so that they can become a con solution minded graduates? So we, through CDIO, we really do a stage approach. And every year, we are building in these solution minded competencies. The first year, okay, we have our introduction to engineering with in business. Sorry, introduction to engineering and design. And that's our module that all our first year students in my school will undertake. And they fulfill the CDL standards as well as the key thing is, they really help the students to start thinking from the the point of view of how do they solve problems, okay, by looking at, come out with solutions by looking at the problems. So it is really about a very simple design built projects that they have been given. They have a very clear constraints. And through all this process, we also ask them to look at solving a UN SDG goal. So this gives them that framework of how to, or the frame in terms of how to solve the problem. They are, they do it in team based, so their team based learning also comes in. And here you can see some of the learning outcomes that we hope to bring in through the students. So with all this through the CDIO approach, okay, that is the first step where we start that whole journey of building that solution minded competencies within our students. And then they went into the second year. In second year, our students go through a microcontroller applications. Again, a very project oriented kind of a module. And through this, they build on top of it and they use their year one, first year foundation to build more complex projects. And currently, we are really making use of a microcontroller that is used widely in the industry, the STM thirty two from STMicro. And again, we ask them to integrate the UN SDGs and Singapore's green plan into their solution. Okay, so here, we have, you see here on the right hand side is an example of a MAPP on the microcontroller application project that one of the student groups have done, which is to solve flooding. Okay, so I can share with you all the videos later on if you are interested. But really, the students came up with a way to ensure that when the flood comes, okay, there will be through the microcontroller to be able to bring up a block, something that can block the floodwaters from entering into the compound. So you can see, they come up, they look at the problem of flooding in Singapore. Okay, and then through there, through the CDI approach to come up with the solution. Alright, so this is a story that maybe, let's see if I got time to share very briefly. Have you all watched the show Apollo thirteen? Yeah, so some of you may have watched the show. So there's a scene within the show, okay, to cut the long story short, okay, it's about when the astronauts in Apollo thirteen had to come back because of the incidents that have happened in the in the space shuttle and they had problem coming back to to the earth. And one of the challenge that they have because of the delay in coming back was really that the oxygen filter that was on the onboard the capsule was it need to be replaced, okay? Because the the oxygen filter really do have a certain lifespan. And they had to find a way to use another different type of the oxygen filter, the CO two filter, okay, to be able to replace what was originally being used. And the engineers on the ground, okay, had to come up with the solution and ideas of using all the different things that could be found in the in space, okay, where they they were in order to adapt, okay, that filter to be able to use for the purpose. So you can see in that scene, they they took they took all the different items and they were trying to fit them in together and then communicate them to the astronauts. So eventually, that helped and that saved the lives of the astronaut, okay? So that's something that again, using what is available and through that, to be able to solve a problem that is really at hand. And this, the reason why I bring this up is, this is really what we hope to do, okay, in for us in Singapore Polytechnic, when the students reach the third year, okay? Or really, or rather, the second and the third year. Okay, after they learn, lay all the foundations, okay? There are different opportunities that for our students to be able to apply again their solution minded competencies in order to help to solve the problem. Okay, so these are three different modules or programs that the students can get to go through. The first one is the sustainable innovation projects, where the students from different schools come together and to solve problem statements that come from the community, okay, that is in Singapore. So they spend one semester on this, the problem, and they come up with a prototype that you can share with the stakeholders. The second program that we have is we call the Learning Express. So this is overseas version of the sustainable innovation projects, where the students then go to a community that is in the region. So like Batam in or in other parts of Indonesia, in Vietnam. And this Learning Express allow the students, our students, together with students from the overseas institutions to come together and to solve problems or the some of the things that are identified within the community. The and finally, our students in their third year do what we call a solutioning internship. So these are the three things, the areas that the the students will get to embark on when they at at the second and the third year of their studies. Okay, so this is an example of the Learning Express that I mentioned. And this project has been ongoing for many, many years, where the students went into this community in the Philippines. And what is actually happening in that in that community was that they were growing tomatoes. And many of the tomatoes, when the the harvest is good, many of the tomatoes will be wasted because there is not enough demand for tomatoes. So when the students went in, they had an idea of turning these tomatoes into tomato jams, jams. And that made it very successful. And over the many rounds of the projects, they were able to create more products. And right now, in this community within the Philippines, they are actually setting up a factory to be able to produce produce these tomato based projects. So I thought this is a good example of how, again, our students go in, apply CDIO, apply design thinking in order to solve a problem that is there. So this is how CDIO and when we call design thinking come into the picture and where our Learning Express is a part of as well as our sustainable sustainable innovation project is hard part about part of the whole process of helping build these solution minded competencies within our students. So as we build on the CDIO process of conceive, design, implement, operate, the students also learn about design thinking. And this this fits well into the conceive and design part of the process. And like I say, finally, this is where the students really have an acid test of how they build that competencies in solution minded. In the third year, our students then will have a solutioning project or solutioning internship, where they do a project in the companies that they are interning in. I think that's not also just unique in SP. I was told that even for Poly Batam, in their internship, they are also supposed to be doing a project. And I think this is something that we find very useful because when the students are there, they are really helping the companies, okay, looking at a problem and see whether through CDIO, they are able to come up with a solution. So all our students are expected to do a solutioning project, a CDIO project, when they are in their final year doing their internship. So I won't go into the details of So I won't go into the details of what are the various stages. But it is really something that to us, when the companies see what the students, the products or the solutions that the students have come up with, okay? And that's how it's really a testament of how solution-minded our students have become through the three years that we built on them. So again, this example of a solutioning projects that was done by our students, I won't go into the details because the project is on showcase at our, at the booth. We have students there. So if you're interested, you can go there and understand from the students how they come up with a solution for inspecting a plane external, okay? Through video analytics and drones. So as I mentioned, the idea was to really see how our student perform in the environment of the industry. And just now, like what Minister was talking about, that's really where the acid test, and that's what it means about producing graduates that is relevant to the industry. And the industry provides this authentic learning for our students. And yeah, I'm just going to show you some results of surveys. Every semester, we will do surveys with the companies to find out from them how much value they see in our students. So first, the first set of results, we asked the companies, how has the students or the interns contributed to them? Okay, so you can see here, for many of the companies, okay, as, when they are responses, these are the main contributions that our students have given in terms of either improving of a system and the process through the project that they are doing, or they can, they are improving an existing product, okay? Some of the students even created some research and study that the company use in order to, again, eventually develop new products or new services. So you can see here, there are many, many different values that the companies are able to get out of our students as they apply the solution-minded process through CDIO. Again, we also want to know whether, how much savings, how much in terms of manpower, in terms of cost, that companies is able to get when they take in our students. So we have a set of questions on that. And finally, we also ask them, okay? Because the, it's really back into whether they will take in our students either as employees or continuing to have take interns from Singapore Polytechnic. So you can see here that many of the companies do, will want to recommend our students for full-time employment. And the, the, the results here is also bearing in mind the fact that many of our students, after they graduate, some of them may not stay with the company because many of our male students have to do national service. So they, they are still have to spend two years in the army to as a national service. But even with that in mind, many companies are willing to take in our students or even wait for them to finish their national service. Okay, so yeah, because of time, I will have to end off with this. But I really hope to journey together with everyone of us. I think this whole idea of building solution-minded students and eventually, solution-minded graduates or engineers is something that it is important in the light of what is happening in the world out there. And we are committed to continue to learn and to involve in this space. We look forward to collaborations. We look forward to know that, you know, among us, there are many institutions. Perhaps what you are doing in your institution, in your programs, actually has that aspect of building these solution-minded competencies within your students. And we value all these diverse approaches. I know definitely for Poly Batam, you have done even the project-based learning. It's part of building these solution-minded students. And we want to really eventually focus, the key thing is, we want to prepare our, our students so that they are future-ready, okay? So that they are able to meet the challenges that are out there in the industry, able to solve problems, to bring value to the industry and to bring value to the community that they are in. So I really do welcome more exchanges, more learnings from each, from one another. And with that, I want to invite you all to the afternoon session. As I mentioned, there are many things that we can discuss and we can talk about following this. So in the afternoon, during the roundtable, I have one session that I hope through that session to really solicit learnings and we can have a more in-depth exchange of what does it mean to build solution-minded students, to build solution-minded graduates. So yeah, with that, I will end off my talk today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for Dr. Lim give a round applause for him. Thank you very much, Dr. Lim, we can have a sit here. Okay, just to sum up some few key takeaways from Dr. Lim's presentation, I would just take several note. First is that Singapore Polytechnic is a polytechnic for all ages. That Singapore Polytechnic is doing the PET and CIT, Pre-Employment Training and Continuing Education Training. It is a solutioning for the workforce and how to the employees still continue to become relevant to industry. And other point is, Dr. Lim said that we, the world of work have been many changes due to artificial intelligence, skill-based economies, lifelong learning, remote collaboration, multidisciplinary work and other things. It's harder to land a job even for our graduates also and graduate for many university. So that, Dr. Lim says that skills, technical skills will also have shorter lifespan. So our student need to stay relevant. And I also take note that something important is humanity center. So how to build solution-minded student to become solution-minded engineer? That not only human-centered, also understand the impact of one's action into humanity. Also, Dr. Lim present how SP approached to doing this implementation of CDIO binding with design thinking approach with first year and second year also final year student project. Thank you very much. Now, we give a floor for question. If you have really burning, burning question about Dr. Lim presentation, how Singapore Polytechnic, especially for Polytechnic Engineering, approach to implement the CDIO implementation of curriculum and project-based learning for student? You can raise your hand and I will hand it the time for you. Please, do you have, okay? You have one? Can we have the microphone? Okay, for Mark also. And the third is from, okay. Okay, three firsts. From Boo Lili.
Okay, good morning, everyone. My name is Lili again, from Polytechnic Electronica Negris Rabaya. Thank you for sharing your experience as well as your insight, Dr. Lim. Thank you very much. First, I would like to applaud for the, how to say? The tech line of the Singapore Polytechnic to help the students not only to become a graduate that is ready for the workforce, but also for the life and also for the work. I think it is very great idea. Thank you for sharing that. And then my question is about soft skill. Actually, perhaps non-technical skills, right? In one of your slide, you put some non-technical skill there. One that pick my interest is about lifelong learning. In term of international accreditation, it is one of the key skills that always being asked. But my question as the lecturer is, how can we really measure whether our student have already achieved that skills? Because for others, non-technical skills such as teamwork or perhaps adaptability or communication skill, we can still use things like performance, right? Performance score. But for things like lifelong learning, I'm still a little bit confused about that. Can you please explain more about that? Or perhaps your experience about that? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank, thank you. That's a quite tough question. Yeah, it's something that has, I'm sure bothered many of us on this. How do we know that we have built that lifelong learning skills? I can share from SP our experience. I think one of the things that we do is definitely allowing the students to know. So it's, the question is about not just learning what they are taught, but the part about learning how to learn, correct? Lifelong learning is about you are giving them the skills so that through life, they can continue learning. So it's really about the learning of the skills of learning. So in SP, we do have another aspect, okay? While I've been talking about solution-minded students, solution-minded graduates. Another key quality, another key quality that we are looking at in our graduates, which we have these graduates as attribute, is this part about self-directed learning. So self-directed learning is really about learning how to learn. And yeah, there's something that we can have more discussion, how we do it. And yeah, you can talk to Helene, she will be, yeah, able to share more, yeah, yeah.
So if I could just share, I'm actually doing a project in the institution to measure self-directed learning. So to me, self-directed learning is really the foundation of lifelong learning, yes? So my project looks at it in two ways. The first way is to use a validated questionnaire. So there are questionnaires out there, so we use a questionnaire and we validate it with our students first, yeah? So that is one way, okay? To measure whether they are growing in different components of self-directed learning. The other way is to use learning management system data. How often do they click here, click there, click this? What does that tell you about their learning and their self-directed? So this is, the, the research still is trying to link the two. I self-report, I'm self-directed and also my clicks in my learning management system. So that's what my project is now, okay? I can share with you more.
Thank you, Helene.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. Next, we go to Prof. Metz, please.
Okay, thank you, Ju, for sharing your experience. I also like your slide, use what is available. You had the slides, use what is available. So I have a comment, not a question for you. So a comment is, often, you can also reallocate what you already have. So in many universities, in many departments, in many situations, you are complaining that you don't have the resources. You are always looking for funds, you are looking for some more, more and more and more, new things. But think about to reallocate what you already have. Use what is available. So it was a comment. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I think that's very important to always, so I think like what Metz was talking about, not just for our students, for ourselves, we have to think from that perspective, looking at what is available and creating solutions out of it. And resources definitely is always something that is limited within our institution. Then we need to turn how to use all that is available there to create new solutions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Prof. Metz and Dr. Lim for the answer. I'm sorry, I will give, first is the, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. The, the one with glasses, the, yeah, okay.
Hello, thank you for your talk. And my name is Marcus Samano. I am from, I work at Oyama College, National Institute of Technology in Japan. And I have a question about your programs abroad. So could you tell me a bit more about like what kind of programs your students are engaged in and how these programs are initially started? Thank you.
Sorry, which program do you?
Just in general, any, if you have any like standout programs you have in mind, would be nice to hear. I guess in general, I want to know how you reach out to these other schools to, to start these kind of.
Yeah, so maybe I talk about our Learning Express program. So that's not just within our school of Electrical Electronic Engineering. The Learning Express program is institution, the whole Singapore Polytechnic program. And this is where we gather our students, those who are willing to go overseas. We will bring them to one of the communities. And the way that we do it is we partner with overseas institution. And I'm, I think among us, there could be some are already our Learning Express partners. And that's where, when we use the design thinking approach, the first part of the CDIO, C and D, the design thinking, the students learn about design thinking framework, SP's design thinking framework. We also train the overseas academics as well and they train the students on this design thinking. And after that, when the students go over, they will, they will group and partner with the local students within the local institution. And then they will identify some of the problems and challenges that are in the community. So like I mentioned just now, in Philippines, there was this farming community with tomatoes, excess of tomatoes. And then through design thinking, to come up with some solutions that will help to solve the problem that are there. And I think through that, the students gain things like a global mindset. They are able to collaborate among different students with different background, both in terms of nationality as well as disciplines. And they are also able to show, create that empathy and understanding what are the solution, the problems in order to come up with solutions that are in the context of the community. So I thought that's something that we are doing. So every time, the way that we, we start is then, if the overseas institution are keen to partner with us, then we can have discussion. And that's where we have in Singapore Polytechnic, we have a Singapore Polytechnic International Arm that will help to source for some of these collaboration opportunities.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Lim.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm so sorry to cut the time because we have next session. And we also still have Dr. Lim for the afternoon session for Group Two. So if you want to discuss some more with Dr. Lim, we can have a relaxed discussion of this afternoon with the Group Two of discussion, okay? I think after all, that's all for my session. We will continue to the next session. Thank you very much for your attention. I am so sorry that I cannot facilitate all of the question for this session. Thank you very much and handing back to the emcee.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmad Amin Tohari and Dr. Juilim for the insightful discussion.
To Mr. Juilim, please stay with us on the stage because we will be handling over the plug. Now we would like to invite Mr. Hendawan Sobakdi to hand over the plug.
We are now ready to begin our special session one. Our next speaker is Ingenieur Fadli Hamsani, the GM Enterprise Solution Management at Telkomcel and Chairman of the Indonesian Industrial Digital Transformation Council. He will be speaking on Advanced CDIO Implementations, Bridging Industry Needs with Academic Curriculum. And now, we are privileged to have with us Ms. Dwi Kartika as our moderator for special session. Please welcome Ingenieur Fadli Hamsani and Ms. Dwi Kartikasari.
Welcome to Batam, Fadli. Fadli is GM Enterprise Solution Management at Telkomcel. Pak Vadli is GM Enterprise Solution Management at Telkomcel, also Chairman of Indonesian Industrial Digital Transformation Council. We are happy to have you here. We will have a balance insight from Pak Vadli from the industry perspective to balance previously from Singapore Polytechnic. So we are happy to have these discussions. Okay, can you start right away? Okay, sure.
Present, okay, okay.
The slide, is the slide already there?
Can I have my slide? Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Good morning, everyone. Because I'm in Batam, I think it's mandatory to make a pantun, right? Ke pantai nongsa sambil bernyanyi. Ewa. Mampir ke MB sarapan pagi. Mari bersinergi dan berinovasi menuju industri masa depan yang mendiri. So thank you very much. I would like to, sorry if a bit quick to share about some point that I'm coming from industry, so I'm not coming from academia. Even I have the license to be a lecturer from Poly Batam. So thanks, Poly. So I get a lecture for the professional, you know, they call the professional lecturers. Since I forgot already, it's a long time ago. I go around all the university in Indonesia, Poly and also the university, all the big five. And one time I ever also doing some lectures in the Cambridge University, UK, for the center of the manufacturing in the UK. So here, is it work, this one? Okay, so first of all, I would like to share that I'm coming from industry. The ministry now is going to the one of the factory in Batam. The Schneider Electric is a French company that built the smart factory, the first smart factory in Southeast Asia that recognized by the World Economic Forum. And at the time, I'm the leader for the digital transformation. And what is the very impressive? This kind of things, CDIO is implement long time ago in the life, in my opinion, in my opinion. Maybe it's not the framework, but in the reality. Because at the time, I have 20, 21 internship student that helped me to build the smart factory that recognized by the World Economic Forum. And during the time, the Mac and C come and they look on the all the internship student that work with me. What they are doing, they're doing my job. They're doing a lot of things that's coming from the pain point of the industry. So that's the reality. And I request to the lecturers, all the lecturers in Poly, come to the factory and say, look on this student, they make a job of the workers. They do the research, they do the project base, and we use that immediately. And you know, I request to them also that please don't make my interns another exam. So this is the result. And you know now, some of them, from this 21 student that got intern in Schneider at the time, some of them now is become the data scientist in Schneider Southeast Asia from Poly Batam. So that's the result of this program. So I'm also the technical advisor of the Ministry of Industry. I'm working in Telkomcel as a general manager enterprise customer business. So it's not only for the manufacturing, for mining, for oil and gas, financial business, retail, government. So all the vertical industry. And also as a certified technical advisor for the Ministry of Industry, Ministry of State-owned Enterprise, and also Ministry of ComDG. ComDG is the Ministry of Digital Communication and Digital. And I'm leading the association, what we call the Indonesian Industrial Digital Transformation Council. And I love to work together with the CDIO in the future. So we have a lot of industry that it's our members. So especially for Indonesia or for another country that want to work together with all the industry sector in Indonesia, we can work together, we know their pain point, we know they require to have the R&amp;D support and et cetera. So it's really willing to work together. I think that's the essential of this event. Okay, so I only have 20 minutes to present. First is, what is the CEO talk? I don't know whether the people in the university also try to understand what happening in the industry? What happening with us? I'm coming from industry. What happening? So everyone talk about the tariff, everyone talk about the threat, war, threat war. Everyone talk about the AI, agenting AI, suppression, uncertainty, and et cetera. That's the baseline, that should be the baseline why we have this program. There should be the baseline why the R&amp;D, the research, the learning base, all these things should be matched with what happening and what they talk about, what the CEO talk about. And what is the need? After we know what is the CEO talk about, what is our pain, what is industry pain, and what is the trend? Is it real? This is the data from the Future's Job Report 2025 from World Economic Forum. So that's true. The AI, the robot, I just come back from China two days ago. Next week, I will be in Shenzhen. So that's the reality. But honestly, we are very far as a perfect in the country, the ideal in the country saying that eh, we already on this stage. No, we have a lot of gap. We need the support from the university, we need the support from the academia. We want to have this need, the people that who have the competency, not only in the knowledge base, but also on the hands-on to help the all the vertical industry. That's the need, that's the gap. I will talk about the detail later on. But we in industry, we are really clear that we need to do the upskilling. The global teams, the global community, the World Economic Forum always says about the upskilling, the reskilling. Who help us to do the upskilling, the reskilling? It should be the university, it should be the academia. Because you know the framework, you have a framework to upgrade, to upskilling, the reskilling and et cetera. Have another word, upskilling, reskilling, and shifting. Who make the employee, who make the next future employee, which is a student, to be ready, not only on the skill, but ready to shift? Because shifting is not easy. Upskilling, reskilling, we did a lot long time ago, even in this country. But to do the resifting, we need to prepare. Is it the student understand about the interdisciplinary? Is it they know about this vertical? When I go to the manufacturing, after that, in the meantime, I should go for the mining industry? Is it they know the value proposition, they know the value change? I don't think so. So sometimes, when we know that the need of industry itself, then we can make a framework. The human machine frontier, if we look on that, the adoption of technology isn't the reality. So globally, it's increasing a lot. And in Indonesia, every year, every years, minimum I made 1,500 industry, minimum 1,500 industry. Doing the consultation, doing the solutioning, doing the conference, visit their factory, visit the banking industry, visit the retail industry. All of them start to adopt the technology. But you know, honestly speaking, honestly speaking, they still required very long journey of the learning curve. Why? Because the graduate student, honestly speaking, the graduate student is not really, really perfectly ready. So this is not the fault of academia, also not the fault of the industry. This is something that we need to make as a policy. So I'm coming from the government perspective later on. If we look on this, we know, we know the top fastest growing skill, we understand. I'm sure all the people coming from the university, from Poly, we talk a lot about the AI and big data. But what we teach the student? Which AI, which big data? Is it for small, medium enterprise? Is it for the mining industry? Is it for the manufacturing industry? And how about this very specific situation and condition on the country? Is it we aware that the manufacturing is almost 20% is for our GDP? Is it we aware that the mining or energy is almost 10% of our GDP? Is it we aware when we build the competency, when we prepare the student, they will go to this industry? Because this industry giving a lot of percentage of the GDP of the country. And how about the level of on the vertical? Is it we understand very well what kind of the vertical industry that or the sector that we want to focus on? So that's a lot of question when we look on how we want to do this kind of the program. I try to understand the CDIO, we have this advanced CDIO, embedded emerging tech, multi-disciplinary, industry commentary. When I am in Batam, 15 years, I'm doing the lectures for two or three university and Poly in Batam, also in vocational school. But is it all the industrial expert, they willing to do this? Or they know about this need? The answer is no. So by this kind of program, I'm very happy to be here and to give some input that this program should be engage a lot of industry expert. And the industry expert, they coming from different vertical industry. And especially for Indonesia, then we need to focus on the university or the Poly that coming on this event today is a part of the CDIO members of Indonesia. It's very important to specify or categorize which kind of the industry expert and which kind of the sector industry and what kind of the CDIO subsidiary program later on to accelerate the adoption and acceptance in the industry itself. I think some question is raised just now when the Pak Lim is presenting. It's not only about the, it's not only about the technical skill, it's about the collaboration, it's about the sustainability mindset, it's about the digital literacy. In Indonesia, I go because of my job, I go from Papua to Aceh, and I meet the industry. I go and meet not only the very big company, not only the multinational company, but also meet the small, medium enterprise. You can imagine, it's very hard, the gap is very far. My responsibility in Telkomcel to enabler the internet for them. My responsibility to give the digital literacy. We can say that eh, you can learn just open the internet, you can learn everything from YouTube, from TikTok, from Instagram, Udemy, Coursera, all the things, link in link. But then they said eh, I have a difficulty, I don't have an access. After that, they said eh, I learn already, but I don't have the use cases. You know, Batam is lucky, is a lot of industry. If you go for Flores, if you go for another part of Indonesia, but we have a university there, we have a Poly. So this kind of program need to identify how we can help the different maturity level of student, different the maturity level of industry to make it the program is really can adapt and adopt with all the segment that we want to targeted. What is the gap between the academic and the curriculum? What is the gap? This is very honest, very honest. Long time ago, I'm part of the vocational and support also to build the curriculum for industry for 0.0 with the Ministry of Industry. Under Ministry of Industry, because I'm technical advisors of Minister of Industry. So we make for all their Poly, we make the curriculum focus on the for the 4.0. Things is four years back. And of course, all the graduated student for them absorbed by the industry because they are coming from the schools is owned by the Ministry of Industry. But how about others? How about coming from all others, Poly and university? We still have a gap. The curriculum today, the curriculum today, is it real, really is a match with what industry need? That's the first question. And to be agile, is it today the university or Poly policy by the government allow to make it agile? There's a question. So I think we need to push, that's why in my opinion, the government need to be there. And the government need to help also to make some policy or regulatory, as a regulatory body to help this situation. The limited exposure to the real project. I love to see Pak Lim just now mentioning some projects coming from some industry. I can tell you, Pak, I have a database of industry in Indonesia that they have a lot of pain point. And you know, they require to have a solution. Normally, if they can meet this kind of the very respective people that want to help the industry, they will solve the industry, they will solve their pain point, they will solve the problem. I can tell you, they have a money. Because it will be part of their revenue to solve the pain point. But they don't know. I talked to Pak Didi just now, how many industry know this program in Indonesia? So we need to measure. And honestly speaking, like what I said to you, is the real. We know, we want to know, the industry will make the all the list of the pain point. And then the university will have the all the lead, all the lead list of the pain point and also make a research and solve the problem. That's the need. Lack of interdisciplinary integration. I think that's something that in fact, in the reality, in industry, we still facing this issue. The last one, last not least, assessment method, how to measuring. Sometimes, sometimes, I meet the student. And when they go to the industry, they want to help, they want to make an exposure, doing some extraordinary. Then after that, they said, Pak, Bu, I have a difficulty because I need to make a report to my university, my campus because if not, then they will not measure me as a good student. That's also something that we need to be aware. How this kind of program really not really using the framework to have the very good framework to help the student to make it them easy also when they go on this kind of the program. How and what we see? I think she's the link between the academia and industry is very important. And today, when I look on some growth country, they put in industry, in their industry, they put a lot of R&amp;D. In fact, today, in Indonesia especially, it's not like that. A lot, I can say to you, almost 70% of local industry in Indonesia, they don't have very specific strong R&amp;D team. They don't have. Because they thinks that it's not their core, they don't want to invest. So that's normally the opportunity. So why not the university make the lab in the industry? They want to spend the money and to help the real pain point of industry itself. And that's what they require. The practical collaboration model that I look in Indonesia start to have, but it's not massive at this time, co-creation curriculum. The second one, internship, but with the credit system. Number four, number three is a hackathon. Every year, a lot of industry support by the government, sometimes they doing the hackathon. But again, the hackathon is not only for the reward, but to solve the problem. And again, the research and all the information that university or Poly they make, sometimes industry feeling that is too... sometimes industry feeling that is too high. Normally, what we require is this one. That's, that's again the matter that we need to look back. The last not least, joint supervised project. That's why I think is very important to understand the use case. This is some use cases in the, one of the university in Indonesia. I think is maybe some of them is also is coming from ITES. So it's really real, the subject, the problem is coming from the industry. I think it's the same use cases also that Pak Lim mentioning. But the point that I want to say is they still require to have a lot of kind of things that supporting the industry and collaborate with all the stakeholder. I think I have another two slide. One, how and what is the key enablers for this one? The first is the partnership. How many of the university or poly, they partnership with some of the uni, some of the industry that not famous enough? Sometimes the university and poly, eh, I want to partnership with Telecom Cell because it big name, Unilever, Schneider, Rexroot, Festo and others. How about the 60% of industry, which is maybe they are not well known? And normally, big company like Schneider, Festo or Panasonic, they already have the R and D. And that's again, my focus is to help the country. My focus is to growth, like what Pak Ministers mentioned, we need to grow 8%. We need to help industry entity that required to help. So partnership between academia in industry, flexible curriculum policy. I mentioned already, faculty training in emerging technology, access, digital lab and digital platform. I think I, I, I listen also, some, I think Mrs. also mentioned about the LMS, learning management system. Is it in industry today, they have the LMS? I can say maybe 5%. But they require to have. Schneider, they have long time ago because they are multinational company. Again, this best practice need to be massive. This best practice need to be collaborate together. How we measure? How is the graduate today? Is it they absorb by industry? How about the employer, like all the industry? Is it they're happy? Are we measure? How about the student itself? Is it their confidence with their competency is updated? How about the growing of industry? Is it the industry in your area, in your province, in your city is grow? If they grow means that this program is success. Last from me, I think this is what we need to do. From the academia, we need to open our classroom to the real industry problem. For the industry itself, we need to invest also. Sometimes, like what I said, it's not to pointing the fingers to say this wrong, this wrong, this wrong. But in industry also, sometimes they need to, to shaping the future. They need to invest the time. They not need to say only look on the business now, but they need to look on the sustainability of the business itself. The last, the student. The student normally also need to be proactive. Because if not, the only some student, they can absorb and get the ideal benefit of this program. Some of them, they don't understand why they should use this kind of the program. I think that's all what I can share in this particular time. Thank you very much. The point that I'm really love to have on this event. And I hope I can give in some contribute also for the CDIO, especially in Indonesia. And maybe also in the region. Because my association, we work a lot with all the vertical industry. So we are Indonesian Industrial Digital Transformation Council. We lock with the government, we make some policy, we make some standardization. We love to understand what CDIO also can bring this in national impact together with industry players in Indonesia. Thank you very much. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you for this insightful presentation from Mr. Fadli. And I find any question from the participants? One? Two? Okay, I have to limit questions because Pak Fadli has a flight to catch. So maybe only two for now, please.
Thank you very much for a very interesting and insightful points, I would say, to enhance the industry and academia linkages. I'm from Pakistan. I'm working in an, in an engineering university for the past 12 years. And we have been focusing on enhancing the industry academia linkages. So I want to share some of the perspective and some comments from my side. Firstly, like the, the reason I'm here is to enhance my understanding of how I can improve the output of engineering. And that is basically that the students, they are well prepared to be served, to be serving in the industry, right? I mean, that is the reason. So one challenge is that most of the academicians in Pakistan universities, as well as I think that I do know of, even in USA, in some of the universities, the academicians who are maybe lecturers or assistant professors, they directly graduate from university and they get a job. Like in USA, the trend is that if you, if you are a graduate of a top 100 QS ranked universities, you can get a job of assistant professor in a relatively lower rank QS, QS ranked university. So I'm not talking about Pakistan, I'm talking about USA. That those academicians or those faculty members, they have done to prepare the engineers to address these issues. Like one thing that you said was that we have to co-op the industrial stakeholders in the projects that we are giving to students, right? And these projects, they have to be supervised by the academicians who don't have the industrial experience and exposure. That is one thing. And it's there in the US, it's, it's significantly a bigger problem in Pakistan. So how we are addressing it? There is no direct solution, but indirectly, we are assessing it through maybe requesting the industry. The government is not, not involved because obviously, the government, whatever their agenda is, there has to be some financial backing for it. There has to be some funding for it. So if they, if they have to develop some industry academia linkage centers, they have to hire people for that, then they have to invest on it. So that is of course, a big challenge for a developing country like Pakistan. So we have to focus on industry academia linkages on our own. So that is the first challenge. Secondly, the motivation of students to get involved in industrial project is also not that much from this aspect. The reason is that when they go to industries and they go and they do these projects which we give them, the industry is not that much flexible to share with them or to get them involved. Because for instance, I had an experience working in a fertilizer industry that was ExxonMobil. They make fertilizers. I worked there for one year. So they have a predefined steps for everything and they are very safety critical steps. So students, they can't just go there and you know, be part of them. So they are not very open. They, they are comfortable in their own environment. So these are few challenges. I, I mean, I could give a whole talk on it maybe sometime later, but these are just my take on this. And we are, we are struggling with it. We have our own issues and we have our own challenges. But let's see where, where it goes.
Thank you very much. So maybe I would like to give some comment on that point. Is first is, is really as an industry practitioner, we are thinking about the value. If you come and doing some your research to our industry and you said eh, I will help you. I'm doing my research here. We're thinking that eh, why this guys is coming to here? And you asking me a lot. You're not helping my pain point. You want to prove your research. You see the difference? So please come to industry saying that eh, what is your problem? It's not about my research, it's about your problem. I think this is the CDIO program. So you come to my industry, do too, you want to help my pain point. Which is I don't have, I don't have the knowledge, which is I don't have the, the value. You have the value, you come and help. So I can guarantee you, the local industry in Indonesia will give you the red carpet. Because you come and help them. I no need to pay. Who pay you? The research program? To, to help what? To solve the problem. And you can make this, you can put this in Scopus or whatever the research platform to say eh, I help this industry, this is the real problem. And I can save. How many billion you want to save? How many percent you want to save? That's the value. To identify and understand that the university is coming is not because I'm a academic, I have a research, I have this program, I want to prove my research in your industry. That's wrong. Sorry to say it. Normally, you need to ask them eh, what is your problem? Don't care about my research eh, I have this pain point. Then I use my knowledge, I have a research, then I will prove my research to help this industry, this company, using my skill, using my competency. That's the first one. That's the first one. The second one is about engagement. It's about the engagement. I believe everything have, required to have a policy, required to have a regulation. Is it when the, I, I talk a lot with the minister, Minister of ComDG, Minister of Industry. I said, Pak, Bu, are you sure you want to help this country to all the stakeholders? It's not bringing their ego? And I said eh, they need to understand, they need to understand. This is for us, especially in Indonesia, I think we, we same. And the point is, is it also, is it also in the university? When, when you as a professional in the university, spend at least, let's say, three, three months? Flip flop eh, it's not the three month full time. In the university, try to identify, solve the problem by all the methodology and everything. Is it the university give you the allowance, the times to do this? So that's also the things, right? But if you ask me as an industry practitioner, as a government's stakeholder, because I'm a technical advisor of the ministers, I said eh, we need to do this. We need to do some disruption. We need to embrace the difference. We need to customer centric. We need to learn every day. This is the core value that not everyone have this mentality, the mindset. This is what we need to push to our students to say that eh, please, you come to the university as an internship. You registered as internship only in the university. In industry, you are not internship. You are a worker, right? Because, because if I treat them as an internship and if I treat them, I treat you when you come to the industry as a researcher, then I will say eh, don't share this information. Don't share this information. Because everything is not for me, it's for you. So what I want to say in the short is about the core value. If you know that what is the value want to add? And we know what is the value that they missed now in the users, then they will open. I can guarantee you. Even if you want to make your research support the local industry in Indonesia, I will open some industry for you. Because a lot, the industry still have a lot of pain point. And they require the expertise from the university to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Another question, please, over here? Last questions? Until what time?
First, thank you for the excellent presentation. And you are highlighted the advances CDIO. And my question for you is the data you saw on the slides already show clear shape to AI. And my question is, is your opinion how university can move beyond the teaching about AI and effectively teach student how to use AI to visibility as a fundamental professional skills? Thank you.
I'm sorry, name and from?
My name is Khoang from Jita University, Vietnam.
Vietnam. Thank you very much for the question. I love the question. Is how the university or poly can make the curriculum, the methodology, everything that really match with what we require, what we need in industry? Ask the industry to go to the university and spend the time of the university people go to industry. Then you will know very well. I'm coming from industry, Pak. I'm 15 years in each company. We have a factory in Vietnam, Schneider at the time. So we go, I go, I visit the factory. And you know, I'm doing the, I'm a teacher in the vocational school in Indonesia, in Batam. Seven years I'm a teacher, Saturday. University, I teach in the university and also I, I am a lecturer in poly, Batam. So as a practitioner, I know, I'm really know what happening. You know, 2010, 2010, I bring already the VR to my technical school, to my school for the vocational school student during the, it's before the COVID situation, you know, before the metaphor is very famous. I already bring this. Why? Because I know that it's the need in industry. And if you think about the AI, everything, I think is the first, we need to understand the macro. In your country, what kind of the sectors that very impacted to the country? Like what I said in Indonesia, 20% GDP is coming from manufacturing. So please, please, university, poly in Indonesia, if you can graduate the very best student, they can work on the manufacturing, they can grow and then the country will be grown. The 8% what the minister mentioned will be achieved. Because the GDP 20% is coming from the manufacturing. So we need to understand first, what is the sector that we need to focus on? Agriculture, manufacturing, mining or what? So once you teach the AI, AI for the retail, AI for the manufacturing, AI for the mining is different, right? So then after eh, I learned this, okay, you can say to me, the core basic is same, right? Then the student need to do again, then some adapt, adopt the, the industry behavior, something. That's true, but again, the learning curve is too long and we lose the game. We are not the front runner. So the idea of this program is we are very specific after. You need to know very well which sector in this country that you want to focus on. After that, when you learn, when you teach the student, now you need to intra, interdisciplinary, like what I said. Even you are poly, then you know the manufacturing is the, is the, is the country GDP promote. Then you need to understand the value change of the manufacturing. Then on your subject AI, you need to specific teach them on the production maybe, on the warehouse maybe. On the, I go to poly, the, the smart warehouse, the example of the Singapore poly. So see, they focus on this because a lot of hub and the warehouse in, in Singapore. So they focus to make the smart warehouse on the university, on the poly. Because they know what is the country required to have. And again, I'm always saying that sometimes you need to make a class on the industry. That's, I guarantee, in Indonesia, I can guarantee thousand industry, they welcome to you to come to give the lectures or you bring your student and ask what kind of the AI required on this particular industry. And you teach them and teach and follow the required, the demand on the reality of industry itself. The last not least, please, seeing on the level of the maturity. Industry, Pak, industry level maturity is a very diversity. Some industry is very small, medium enterprise. Some industry is a medium, some industry is large, some industry is multinational company. If you teach the multinational company for the AI, I don't think so you require to teach them. They will do it, no need to, no need to help them even. Because they're smart enough, they have the Because they're smart enough, they have the global company that coming from the Silicon Valley etcetera. But you look on the medium size and you identify what is their pain point on the human, on the process, on the, on which kind of the value change that they require. So you will teach the right AI, the right kind of the emerging technology that required by the country. So that will be helpful, Pak, thank you.
Thank you. I think that's the last question, so let me summarize before we conclude this talk. Pak Fadli mentioned about that CDIO connects classroom innovation with real industry impacts and that the CDIO impact should be felt by employers, graduates as well as collaboration schools. I think that's it, so let's give around a applause for this exquisite talk. Thank you so much, Pak Fadli. And I'll give it back to Master of ceremony, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwi Kartikasari and Insinyou Fadli Hamsani for the insightful discussion. To Insinyou Fadli Hamsani, please stay with us on the stage because we will be handing over the plaque. Now, we would like to invite Mr. Hamdan Yari, the Chairman of CDIO IRM, to hand over the plaque.
We will now take a short break and then working session for five minutes. We now move to our special session two, featuring Dr. Ahmad Riyad Virdaus, the Vice Director for Academic Affairs at Politeknik Negeri Batam, and Mr. Hendawan Subakti, a Senior Lecturer and CDIO Task Force Members.
They will be discussing introduction and sharing on CDIO with emphasis on Poly Batam implementation. Please welcome Dr. Ahmad Riyad Virdaus and Mr. Hendawan Subakti.
Okay, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh, good morning. Pak Rivi supposed to be here, but he go with minister. So I don't have any moderator also, so lucky me. Yeah, I have a solo career now, right? Well, this is like a sharing session about how Poly Batam implementing the CDIO. I have a very short time because we have to catch our lunch, right? Okay, so we will talk about the PBL and CDIO milestone in Poly Batam and then the best practice of how to implement the CDIO in Poly Batam. So it is about a Poly Batam, we have around twelve K plus students, including the morning class and evening class. Why we have the evening class? Because a lot of forty percent of our student is a worker. They are working in the morning and then they need to study in the evening, very hard to them and also for us, right? And then we have around three hundred and three lecturer. You can imagine about how, how we can like using traditional course, like a lecturing. The minimum, we have one course in five classes and into five to eight classes. If every class we go to there and then talking about something, we have to move to another classes, talk the same way. You know, that is so boring, this is so time consuming. So we have to move to the next way, how to, we are teaching and learning, right? And then we have twenty-five study programs, separate into four department. We have a business management department, we have informatics engineering and electrical engineering and also mechanical engineering. Some of them recognized by national accreditation, we have the, some of them is in excellence and some of them also evaluated and accredited by international accreditation like IIB and AEBET. Okay, so we have to find solution, how this kind of big students with the limited resources, we have to move like innovative pedagogy, so we call it the campus PBL, the PBL campus. Okay, this is a tagline, so the idea is we are trying to merge like integrating the teaching and learnings and then research and community service into one activities. The, the activity will be the project based learning, the multidisciplinary project based learning. So the PBL stand for in Poly Batam can be a project, problems and sorry, in bahasa we say the penelitian is mean research and then pengabian is mean community service, teaching and learning, pembelajaran, perlombaan, min contest and so on. So we are trying to make another new like PBL, so everything is P, so that become a Poly Batam based learning. Okay. And we trying to put the Poly Batam like one stop activity for three roles of higher learnings in Poly Batam. Sounds good, but believe me, it's very hard to do, okay? So this is like experience that we have trying to do in the past few years. So there is so much trouble there when we are trying to put everything together, okay? So the first one like the curriculum is not support to the project and even our lecture is not ready for that. And also how to implementing like multidisciplinary teamwork because some project need maybe from this study program and from that study program and then suddenly the course was not there and then that's the problem. But the main problem is the change of the mindsets. So the past few year, I become a public enemy here, you know? Because suddenly must to move to another way how to, we, we do the learning and we do the teaching, right? And we meet the CDIO, okay, I will tell you about the milestone. We start and at the two thousand and seventy with a project, but this one is like just the extracurricular project to do some, to preparing our student to go to robotic competition, okay? So the only courses to recognize is just for final project. And then we move to two thousand and eighteen, there is one study program. So from competition become a program. The robotic study program start in two thousand and eighteen and we have fourteen internal project. Most of them is for preparing student for the competition. And we trying the project based learning in this study program into two years. And then we try to make like level up in the institutional level. So we starting the campus PBL program in two thousand and twenty. Then suddenly Stein Study Program involves there and then start messy, right? This is something crazy happening here with the two hundred and seventy internal projects and twenty-three external projects. And we, we recognize the problem and then we try to solve it using the CDIO. Thanks to Prof. Matt Hansen to make it possible. Well, we tried to adapt again in robotics engineering technology as a pilot project. So for PBL, two years and then try to separate into another study program. And then we are starting using the CDIO two years and we try to validate, is it good? Is it right or wrong? So we trying to become a member of CDIO internationals. So we have, we, Poly Batam got a member in two thousand and twenty-two. So we are confident that this is a right way. So after that, we are doing some sharing with another study program, how to do or how to implement the CDIO in a study program. So we established the task force teams for the CDIO in two thousand and twenty-two. The main responsibility is how to planning, how to organize the CDIO implementation in institutional level. So including Pak Uuf, the Director of Poli Batam, the previous before Pak Bambang and the majority is Head of Study Program. Why we, we need like make a special agent, right? To spread into different study program, okay? That's the idea. And then we try to change the mindset through doing some workshop and introduction. So we have one study program in two year implementing the CDIO and then we try to sharing to another program. We try the first one in April twenty and twenty-two. And then after that, a lot of CDIO refreshment workshop, mentoring, cascading, including Pak Sinboh there, that's mentoring us, yeah. Okay. And we also write some guidelines for internally Poly Batam, how to driving a change, building the next generation, that's the title, how to transforming, transformation toward modern education. This is the like a guideline for our lecturers, for our students and also for our managements. Okay. Okay, so this one is conducted in two thousand and twenty-one. We trying to define what is the correct expectation of our graduates. So we, we held like a survey for industry, for faculty, for alumni. So we can see that the top rank is not the technical skill, but the personal skill and attitudes, professional skills and then multidisciplinary teamwork and communication. This one become the highest expectation from our stakeholders. So from this one, we try to put the like product development, communication, system thinking, teamwork into our curriculum. We can see here, there is some blue area here, this is like a project courses. So we set up the project courses in every semester and then we try to put courses, another courses to support the project. So that is we trying to do, not to like make something new with the curriculum, but we are trying to place the courses into the place that can be support to the particular projects. And then if we have some like a dot here, like from communication maybe, so in that, that course, we must put like a course learning outcome. Instead, this is like introduction to robotics engineering, this is a technical courses, but we need to make sure that also build like a communication skill. So we put like how to present the result of project orally in English. That is some like a course learning outcome that we put. So the course must be support to the projects that we are doing. And then we have like a proficiency level based on the survey. So this must be designing in each our courses. So we have like a CDIO skill level progression matrix here. So every course must be connected to certain CDIO syllabus here. So CDIO syllabus will become like the, that's one is a student outcome and also the indicators, the performance indicators. So we have the five student outcomes and then every outcome have performance indicator. The performance indicator we take from the CDIO syllabus. So every courses must be connected to specific student outcome and specific in the, in a performance indicator, okay? So we trying to make a targeting level from the beginning to the targeted level from the survey. For example, like the, we look the previous slide that communication is targeted is of five, sorry, four and then we trying to move smoothly from first years, second years, from targeted level in two, three and finally in five. So we have like a final level in this curriculum. We have like expected CDIO level here from the survey. We have like expected CDIO level here from the survey. So we can make sure that the gap is zero or maybe plus one. That what we do. And then we develop the ecosystem in institutional level. We have like a PBL director and then the PBL generator, reviewer, actor and supporter. So every PBL must be generated. Can be from downstream innovation office, can be from vice director tree, can be from research center, lecturers, can be from the other stakeholders. So it must be reviewed by PBL reviewers, which, which project can be done in this measure or not. And then after that, the PBL actor will be doing some conceive, design, implement and operate. This is the ecosystem for project scheme. We have a professional project. This must be doing with the professional people, not doing by our students. Because the professional project, there is money there. So we have to make sure that everything is good. But our student can help in this particular project. But for the portfolio project, it can be done in our student using the PBL. So you need, you see that this one is like a department. So when the project is coming, so every department knows that some project is coming. And then we are trying to review. So which study program can involve? This is the part of review, like is it comply with our course? Is it comply with our capability? So that's your part of review. And we have the setting up the PBL calendars. The green one is the previous academic calendar. We start from week nine to do some problem shopping, right? So we go to industry, we go to our stakeholders to do some meeting. And then we talk to them, what we, what they have, any problem that we can help to solve. And after that, we can write the project proposal and do some project review. So in the first week of the new academic calendar, the PBL team is already set up. So we do some PBL kickoff there. And then after that, in the week two and fourteen, we have the project implementation using the CDIO stages. And in the last, in the two last weeks, there is a project closing there. Okay, so we are modify the project-based learning stages with the CDIO. This one is, this is the weeks. And the weeks one and two must be a conceiving weeks. So everybody in Poli Batam must talking about their projects with the stakeholders, identify what they need, the project scope, the system requirements. And then after that, they trying to translate the requirement into the solution. They concept the design, they make like a preliminary design and using the design thinking process into this conceive and design. And in mid of semester, there is a benchmark and reflection there. So every project can present and then another, another team can be have a discussion. And there is some inputs or maybe some improvement there in design way. And after that, we have the implementation weeks and operate weeks. Okay, this is the picture of problem shopping. This is our, the words stakeholder from industry, they come here. And then we also can go to their sites. And then after that, we identify the problem that we can do together. And then we are in the, during the conceiving weeks, this is our student and the industries, they are talking about the problem in details. So after that, the design and implement will going. And then the project monitoring here, our student present directly to the clients. And also this one like in a mid semester exam or final semester exam, the student in a group, they have the presented their, their project. And you can see this one, this is the lecturers. So the project must be supported by courses. During the exam, the lecturers will become head there and then asking something that related to their respective courses and related to the projects. And at the end, must be project delivery and completion. Okay, we also built the PBL activity information system to connecting it together. This is the last semester, we have thousand more project proposal and then we accept eight hundreds. This is like, this is informatics, engineering, electrical, business management and mechanical engineering. Okay, this is the menu in a account of lectures. So there is a propose the PBL title, lecture can be propose a PBL. If there is any account there from our stakeholder, they also can propose a project. And there will be a, the list of the PBL team here. And list of project manager, okay? We have the new role in Poli Batam, lecturers and project manager. So you see that one courses become like a project course that must be consists of maybe in one class thirty student. And it can be some project there. Every project must be have one project manager, that is the lectures. So the, the main role for project manager is make sure that everything is okay. If the student needs is received by students. Just make sure that everything is on the schedule, right? Okay, this are the record, the daily record. So this one like in a done by our student. So they can record the planning, they can record the backlog, to-do list in progress and done. So everything can be monitored by lecturers, by project managers and by stakeholders itself. And we, we also built the project consumable store because every project have a limited budget. So our student must be shopping from here within the limited budget. And then the project manager can approve or cancel it. So it's depend on your situation. Okay. This is example of the one team. They all already having some money here. And we can also look after the every team here. So they already spend their money, how many budget they, they already have. And we can control it. And this is the industrial project portfolio from, from our industry partners. I think some of them you already see in the PBL exposition yesterday. This is the project showcase. We doing this PBL annually in, normally in August. Yeah, so this is like motivation for our student also. They, they make a project. They see, they, they know that at the end of semester, somebody will, will be come and see the project. So they are doing in a good way. Okay. This one is example of innovation exchange. So during the mid semester, we do with, this one is like for Poli Batam and Singapore Polytechnics. So the student will be share each others about the projects. We have like a mini conference, the keynote speaker will be students. And then after this session, we have the parallelization in our labs. So the student from SP, from Poli Batam can discuss directly in a labs. So I think this is a good opportunity to us. So welcome if another campus join with Poli Batam or SP. And we also build some joint teams to go with, to go to National Robotic Competition in Singapore. This is the blended team. So we got the second and third place in 2024. So now we preparing another event, more bigger, to go to Robo Cups Internationals together with Poli Batam and Singapore Poly Student in one team. This is look easy, why? Because we have the same language, the CDIO language, okay? So this is a banana slicer project is happening in Batam. So we helping small enterprises for banana chips. So we trying to design, to conceive to design, to implement, to operate, building machine to slicing the bananas. This is also doing together with ASP students. I think there is a one session with Pak Kim Soh and Pak Arifin will share about the experience of Trans Nationals Project-Based Learning. And then this is a community service for robotic workshop. We go to senior high school, helping them because they are asking us to have some like extracurricular in robotics. So we send our student there to see what they need. And then they starting to design, to build the robots and then operate the, the results. Okay, this is the project-based learning assessment plan. So we are trying to connecting the everything to conceive, design, implement, operate stages. So every, I think it must be reviewed right now because too much, you see? So in the second week, we have system requirement review. And then after that, we have the concept design review and so on. And we have like a project presentation in the mid semester. And also for the final semester, we have the project presentation and demonstration of the products. That's the way. Okay, this is like, this is a sample of question. Regarding to the project, please write its system requirement review. So it, it cannot be done by student with chat GPT. Okay, because we are not asking about the definition or some things, but we asking about the real project. And that's our student doing some presentation and demos. Okay, I think I have some video here.
So hello, my name is Axel. I come from France and I'm here in Poli Batam for an internship of four months.
Okay, hello, my name is Kevin Indarinata. I'm fourth semester majoring in Electrical Engineering Studying Program of Robotic Technology.
Hello, my name is Abdulasi De Kaputra. You can call me Sidik. I'm majoring in Robotics Engineer.
So I'm joining the project of Mobile Autonomous Robot. So that's the project I have to do for the four months. But I also did some other activity, like community service in elementary school, or activities with other club, like the English Club or something like that.
Right now, I'm joining a contest team of Kaya's Bay Broda, our Omni Wheel Soccer Robot. And I'm in program deficient and focusing in microcontroller.
I have joined the team competition for robotics humanoid soccer. In this team, I have developed my skill to design the humanoid robot can play football.
I think it's good. There is a lot more people in here. I think about eleven thousand people in the university. So it's a lot more than us in France. But the environment is still really good. Everyone try to help each other. We are like in a big room shared with everyone. And it's a good environment for study and learning. Yeah, different than in France. But like for the facilities in itself, I think you have more things for the robot, as like 3D printer, as a computer, things like that, you have more than us in France.
It's felt a little different from before because in, in vocation of high school or in high school, we got teach by our teacher. But in this Poli Batam, we learn by ourselves, we experiment by ourselves and we do the thing ourselves.
Because I have joined competition team, I have participant to the competition in international. This is my best experience that I can go to the end of one to competition with other robotics team in the world. And we got the third place on that competition.
I do join the Omni Wheel Soccer Robot Contest in KRE in regional level at 2023. We win our contest in regional level, we actually won in the first place. That's a little bit memorable. I gain a lot of teamwork experience because I've learned in my group and we learn as a guru. And of course, the next time, I got a chance to learn in Taiwan in the next August for six months.
I think it's a good approach. It can enhance your technical skills. And also having like a project group make you have skill in leading the other people, something like that. It's really helpful for your future work, I think, as engineer.
My project-based learning is humanoid robot. So I have to develop every year to the humanoid robot, such as how the robot can balance on the walking to the ball. I think in Polytechnic Batam, we have the project-based learning and implement the concept of the CDIO. I think it's very good to us as a student to build or create our project because we have to conceive, we have to do design, we have to do implement and we have to do the operate the concept that we have made at first.
Don't be afraid, CDIO support you to learn by yourself. So it might be a little bit difficult at first, but don't be scared because if you learn it enough, it can be really, really interesting and it can be fun.
Okay. This one is like increasing productivity and safety in one of our industry partners. They report to us that our student make lifting machine. The previous one is using the operators and then we built some machine there. So it's reporting to increasing the productivity and safety. This one is another company reporting to us. They are saving one point eight million rupee, sorry, billion, billion rupee in the years when our PBL student go to there and then combining with the intensive students. So they creating fifteenth project there and then they have tangible and also intangible saving. We also disseminated our CDIO experience into another institutions. This is the moment we have a memorandum of cooperation with SP and seventeen, sorry, sixteen international high learnings in Indonesia. And in the past two years, we go to thirty places from Aceh to Papua to spread the CDIO. Thank you so much. It's, it's one question, okay, yes. Yes.
I know that lecturer as a project manager. So lecturer also have a time schedule, a week, let's say sixteen hours maximum. And you have list of courses in the semester, based on the semester and you plotting all the courses based on each semesters. I'm planning that too and I'm following the pre-production, production and post-production, follow the work process. But I have problem with the lecturers. So our lecturer have almost twenty-four hour, no, no, not twenty-four, eight hours per day times five days times fourteen weeks. It's looks like from this week one to week fourteen, we work all together with the student to finish the project. And about the problem of the lecturer skills, how you upgrade the lecture skills? Because when it's a project based from industry, we have to make sure the quality wise and how, how you upgrade the lecture and prepare them.
Okay, thank you for the question. So everything we do in class, that's the point. So in the previous curriculum, we don't have projects courses. We just have a normal courses. So we put three credits for each semester, it's a full of projects course. So it's also put in a schedule in our activity daily. And we put the another courses to support the project. So fifty percent of time in the supported courses will be do the project. So imagine that we have one project and then somebody take the project as this part because the, the discipline of the courses, we have like five to six courses and every courses take their part. So they use a fifty percent of the time to doing their project in their classes. So in every, in, in every weeks, they can meet together with another members because we have the three credits project course. So basically in Thursday, there, everything is not doing lecturing or practicing. Everybody go to workshop, to workspace. So everybody, members and lecturers as a project manager come there. So this is just a normal schedule, but we trying to separate into three part. The, the theoretical part we do online and most of them, we just put our lecturing video so our student can learn by themselves. And if there is any others, any question, they can, they can come in practical session. Practical session will be, they will be go to Polibatham and then we can discuss about the specific materials. And during the practical session, not fully practical session, but just what we need to, to build the basic skill. And after that, we move to the project. So in, in one lab, so we, we trying to introduce some new skill maybe. And then the case must be bring from their specific project. So that way, that the way. And then we also have a center of excellence. The center of excellence in Polibatham have roadmaps and then the product itself can be designing. And from there, we also have the requirement of specific skill for our lecturers. And from the gap analysis, we, we know that we have to send our lecturer to go to like industrial internship or maybe go to workshop and something. That the way we are trying to identify the gaps. And we also have commit, we ask the commitment from the industry that they have, they, they need to send a people, the respect, the, the project owner to helping our student and also our lectures together. So that's the way that we are doing in Polibatham. Thank you. Well, I think it's the end of session. Thank you so much. Assalamualaikum warahmatullah wabarakatuh. Sorry.
I grabbed the microphone from you because I am so impressed. I couldn't imagine twenty-five years ago, when we founded CDIO, standing here. Emotions, twenty-five years later, I'm here. This is one of the role models. I couldn't imagine this is a role model. And I hope you learn, you go back to your institutions, you create your own role model depending on your situations. Take what you learn, adapt it to your environment and make your own role model. And I'm coming back to you later, hopefully, and see your successes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendawan Subakti and Professor Matt Hansen.
This concludes our mini sessions. Is it now time for lunch and networking? Please enjoy the menu.